Okay, we'll reconvene into open session. And we'll start the business session of the Board of Education. First item is the President's Report. And under Board Member attendance, we did have a vacancy created by Tracy Lenz. She moved out of the district. So we will later in the meeting establish procedures to fill that vacancy by next month. So we thank her for her excellent service to the district. And our next board meeting is July 18th. And then the next one in August is August 15th. So the next item on the agenda is administrative reports. Kyle Gronin.
So we've got quite a bit going on this summer in terms of projects that we're going to get completed around the school grounds and the buildings. First thing I just, I'm going to mention three or four things and then I'm, I'm going to also have the gentleman today from CISA and Complete Control bringing up to speed as to what our summer energy efficiency projects are going to be because it's quite significant this summer. Couple of items just in general, tree removal. We have several trees that are going to need to be slated for removal due to safety and security concerns, safety concerns mainly, I guess. Foremost, we're talking about two of the large pines at the high school need to come out. One is, one is well on its way to being rotten. The other is getting there. And we're going to be doing some more research in terms of harvesting trees on our school property because in talking to the folks that we've been meeting with and talking with, there is some concern that the big stand of pines is going to have to start getting thinned out. We did take one or two down a couple of years ago. This may have to be now, and every year we're going to be taking a couple of those big pines out. So that's going to change the look over there quite drastically. There's some other trees around the district that as well, we know we've got to get taken out, a couple here on the grounds here, as well as over at our environmental learning center. The Kupla, in speaking with CULPS, they are working to get this project done prior to the start of the school year. Spoke with the gentleman on Monday from CULPS and that this is priority for them to get this done before we start the school year. And again, that's reciting. And that's really going to be a visible project this summer when that gets done. They'll change the look of that a bit, but their, their goal is done before school starts. Window frame aluminum wrapping at the middle school, high school, that was on the 1932 section. And that, again, we're going to try to get that done so we can go maintenance free there and not have to worry about dry rotting frames on those nice windows there. If we're awarded Department of Justice Safety and Security Grant, we'll be scheduling the addition of the doors in the kindergarten. I anticipate we're probably going to get this grant. If not, we had, you'd already approved the kindergarten doors. It just may, the grant may allow us to fund it through the grant versus that. Those doors will get done. It's just, we're going to see if we can get the grant to deal with that. As well as additional fencing around the school playground here so that this playground is more secure from, from people, being able to just access it in the middle of the day or at recess time and other times. As well, looking at the 3M security film on the doors and side lights, the placing of some anti-intrusion bollards, basically great big stones or metal bollards in various points. And addition of enhancing our camera systems. That would all be grant funded. Of course, we've got plenty of cleaning and painting. The largest of our projects though is what I'll refer to as our fourth phase of energy efficiency and so will Luke from CISA, but the guys from Complete Control say it's the third phase. But they've really worked on all four phases. It's just in their world of project managers, they've only project managed three. So today we have with us Luke Schultz, Luke is our consultant. You've met Luke before from CISA 10. And I think Luke, you were going to talk about, a little bit about where we've been with this, just so that they, the board has that perspective?
I'll back up and chat with them as well and I'll kind of go through phase four as I'm going through the first three phases. But we'll back up, looking at phase one was in the school year of 1516. You guys passed a resolution for $182,685. That was replacing the Kwani steam boiler at the high school. That was replacing the chiller at the elementary school and integrating the chiller into the automation, the control system. And then you converted some T-12 lighting to LED at the high school through that project. Looking at the energy savings was roughly right, a little over $5,000 for that. And then your maintenance savings was a little over $4,000 with those projects. Phase two was the 1617 school year. Your resolution amount was 490,000. You did a high school roofing replacement, an elementary roofing replacement, T-12 lighting upgrade to LED. And you updated some drinking fountains, sinks. And you did one unit ventilator replacement as well. And you did an IT mini-split AC system as well. Roughly just shy of $3,000 in energy savings for the 1617 school year and just shy of $9,000 for maintenance savings with that. Phase three, the 1718 school year, which is just wrapping up, 510,000 resolution amount, which was the high school gym roofing upgrade and replacing the roof drains. Elementary school upper roof replacement and the mantled roof replacement. Exterior lighting at the high school and the middle school converted to LED. And interior lighting, did a few classrooms, shop areas, band room and the gym lighting, which was converted LED. And room 301, the one way upstairs, there was controls that were upgraded as well in that area. The energy savings will be to, to be determined as we are completing those projects right now. Phase four, which is this next phase that starts after July 1, 1819 school year, $395,000 resolution. We are looking at completing the remaining section of the elementary school roof above us. We're looking at four unit ventilators being replaced at the high school, middle school through that process. And then the high school gym air handler currently, that is pneumatic controls will be upgraded to direct digital controls. And those energy savings will be determined as well depending on contingency funds and what moves forward. So that's a brief overview. Is there any questions?
Lot going on in June, July and August.
Yes.
And I've got John Coon from Complete Control and Mike Bant, they're project managers for this and have been for three years, working side by side with us. And I don't know if there was anything you wanted to add about the summer's projects?
I think Luke covered them. Unless there are any questions we can speak to.
Off topic, your E-grant has currently not been, I just checked that before we came in, has not been reviewed yet, but in the next couple of days, they're moving pretty quickly.
For the DOJ?
For, yes, the safety grant.
I think the schedule is that all of these projects, our goal is, we want everything off the table by the time school rolls around, meaning we're done.
Yes.
There may be some contingency that's got to get spent out because we always plan a bit of contingency and if there is...
Do you want to know what that amount is?
Yeah, well, sure.
To, not, what the school has to spend, $2,128.79.
Okay.
So it, we're right there.
Right there. Okay. And that is really it for summer projects. We've got a lot going on around the, the school buildings.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you everyone. Thank you for being here today.
Absolutely. Have a wonderful summer.
Yes.
All right, next item is end of year activities. Kara?
Our last day of school, well, our first day of summer school is already on Monday and our last day of school is Thursday, teachers are Friday. So we, because of the snow days, moved right into summer school, but things are going well so far for summer school. The last day of the regular school year on Thursday, once again, people volunteered to bring in some parent chaperones for the afternoon. We had the kids set up in their groups, which we call school families, which we have from the beginning of the year all the way through. The kids are divided up K4 and they stay with that group whenever we do school-wide activities. So they were divided into their school families and did different stations from relay races to Jenga, giant Jenga, to beanbag toss, things like that. They've done this in the past. The big addition this year was the bounce house that people rented for us. So it was, it was great. The chaperones and supervisors that were out there said the kids did an awesome job waiting in line and taking their turns and so on and so forth. So we were lucky to have good weather for it, otherwise that would have been a disaster. So the weather participated. So we're hoping that, you know, we appreciate that people does that for us because it really gives the teachers a little break in the afternoon as well to get some things done and wrap some things up at the end of the year. So we're pretty much wrapped up as far as that goes. As you can see in our hallways, there's things out in the hallways as we're moving classrooms and furniture, trying to do as minimal as possible until summer school's over so that when the building's empty in July, we can do some of those bigger things in painting and there won't be kids, kids around.
What is the summer school numbers?
We're in the 90s. And that's not with fifth grade because fifth grader are now middle schoolers so they don't want to come back to the, the little school for summer school. But that has gone up significantly. I think the, my first summer here, we were in the 50s or 60s and then it went, because this is technically my fourth summer doing it, then it was 60s and 70s. Last year it was in the 70s to 80s and we're, I think, 94, 95 kids and that, again, so it's, it's been, it's been a really good improvement. And again, our numbers have gone up too, our population of kids have gone up, but without fifth grade even including them, it's, it's, it's a pretty good turnout. So we're offering some great classes. We have teachers doing crafts and fitness and clay and games and math classes and fun reading things. So it's, it's been a, so far, so good. I know we're only on day three, but we even have a teacher who's doing a fishing class that he wrote a grant to get fishing equipment. So the kids are going to learn how to fish and they go fishing, not every day, but every, you know, couple of days, weather dependent. And another teacher that's doing a service learning class where the kids are going to do volunteer things in the community. So it's some really neat, interesting, unique ideas that our teachers have come up with for these classes, so.
Thank you. Next item is questions and comments from people in attendance. There, no one signed up to address the board, so.
That's all we got.
Okay, that's all you got, all right. So we'll move on to consent agenda. Number seven, consider approval of minutes of the past meeting, May 9th and June 5th.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Number eight, consider approval of financial reports. And note the gifts?
Yes, we had a couple of gifts. We received a donation from the colleagues of Ian Levy, who is the VP of Operations at Eat Street in Madison. They donated $100 in memory and a tribute to his mother Kay Levy, who passed away. And we also received a donation from Connor Taggeras, a xylophone he donated to the music department.
On the Kay Levy donation, we, she was a special ed teacher, so we thought that would be appropriate to, we bought a mural to stick on the wall in our sensory room. That's a beautiful kind of painting, calming scene for that sensory room. So we thought that would be a good tribute to her, so.
All right, I seek a, seek approval of the financial reports. Seek a motion?
No move.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the financial reports. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. There's no unfinished business tonight, so move on to new business. Number 10, consider approval of 201819 employee contracts.
We bring to you for approval Kayla Dorhorst for our open elementary position at first grade. Kayla previously worked with the district through the 4K program when it was, it was three years ago now, I think. So Kayla, we are familiar with. And then Danielle Peters comes to us as a recommendation as our six, really, but to be a 612 science position, should be teaching 7, 8, 9 science. And she has previously been teaching in a school near Stevens Point, I'll leave the district or place unnamed, but is coming with strong recommendations, so look forward to adding her to our staff as well.
You mean separate motions?
Nope, it could be all one.
And so move to people's, uh, first and then afterwards.
A motion and a second, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Number 11, consider approval of posting one FTE at-risk instructional staff position.
With the retirement of Paula Beziner, who served the district for 21 years, basically almost that entire time doing something with at-risk. At one point Paula was an instructional aide in a classroom with a teacher and it was through a full at-risk program. Eventually, as things changed over time, Paula ran what was called the ATS program, the Avenue's Toward Success Program. We downsized that program considerably three, four years ago now when we were experiencing decreased enrollment. And at that time, we continued to have Paula though, although she was still instructional aide with us, she was assigned into the library, but continued to work with our students doing online programming through Play-Doh for credit recovery, as long as, as well as Wisconsin Virtual School for kids who might want to take some enrichment things that we didn't offer, as well as essentially running the library and then being there the early morning person. So Paula had done a lot for us. As our enrollment has gotten larger over the last several years and as our population demographically has changed somewhat, we are finding to the point of, and this was a discussion that we were engaged with before Paula announced her retirement, is we need to do something different to service our at-risk students. These would be students who are at risk of failing not just one, but maybe more than one class. These could be students with Ds, Fs, it could be students who come to us already credit deficient. We need to do something more. As also part of the Response to Intervention or RTI program, this is kind of a key component that we, we have to offer some ability to help these students before we might decide that it would warrant a special education referral on a student, for instance. So really, we need to probably, at this point, look to reinstitute that ATS program. We do have to have an at-risk plan. Right now, we're very minimal on our at-risk plan, very minimal. We, we need to re, re, move back down this path of some sort of full at-risk program. This would allow us to offer what's called Guido II, which is essentially the graduate, the graduation equivalency piece. It would, would open a lot of doors for us to offer some different ways to get students through to graduation. This also, you know, potentially, we look each year at, are we going to recommend students to maybe attend River Cities or Nacusa Academy? Those are students we end up paying for, to those districts to go to those places. It's essentially at-risk programming that we're paying for. You know, each year we have one or two students that we're sending to other districts. So I wouldn't say that we wouldn't, this would totally cure that. There still is sometimes that need, but this might, this would be a way for us to hopefully lessen that need in the future. So our recommendation is to approve this at-risk plan moving forward for this year. This is something we can certainly reassess and it would require us to bring on an at-risk teacher essentially, as well as to fill some aide hours in the library because the at-risk person wouldn't be the library aide. They would, to be quite honest, that was something that was getting to the point where Mrs. Beziner is, is good a job as she has done for us over the years, it was getting to the point that she was not really able to address adequately as, in that dual role, so to speak. So, yep. Yeah, when there's a study hall of 30, 30 students and trying to get the 30 settled and move on and then, then try to help those, you know, yeah. So we would ask your support and, I guess, to post this position.
I make a motion that we approve the posting of the at-risk instructional staff positions.
Good, a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. Number 12, consider approval of support staff pay plan.
Last month I presented to you a plan in the closed session for support staff. This is only the, the pay portion, it isn't the, in the past, we've had like a goal setting and incentive piece, this does not include that at this point. That's something I'm going to look to include within our handbook moving forward. But this just simply includes what we'll do with instructional staff, or not instructional, support staff for this coming year. The plan is basically that follows the idea of the 2.13, which was the CPI index for July. This is where we had settled with our teaching staff with one exception on here, and that is moving food service to a base starting rate of, that's equivalent at least to the paraprofessional aides and, and just getting that group moved along because we were well behind with that group compared to our neighboring districts. So ends up being 28 cents an hour for most people on there, again, with that exception of where food service fell. Brings food service up a bit further along, but it gets their base, brings their base, yep.
We'll be continuing to try to equate that over the course of the next...
Yeah, we're, we're essentially, we're behind our neighboring districts in more than one area, but it's, you can't fix it all at once and we've, we've definitely tried to, the people we've had on staff with the incentive piece and allowing, if they, if they meet that goal, they see a salary increase the next year, you know, that, that certainly helped come from where we were at one point, looking at a one cent raise, which was, no raise. So, so we've tried to do some things there to keep that group moving along. And, and I do want to, I'm going to, when we bring our handbook forward, we'll have an incentive piece built into that as well, like similar to what we've done the last couple of years, so.
All right, is there a motion to approve the support staff pay plan?
Second.
Motion and a second.
Carry, carry.
Oh.
Oh.
You should probably abstain.
Oh.
Support staff.
Support, I'll, I'll say that.
All right, then a motion by Kathy, second by Leo, to approve the support staff pay plan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And one abstained. All right. Next on the agenda is consider approval of 20182019 co-curricular staffing plan.
This, this plan is simply the release of our contracts for the next year. These folks haven't necessarily committed yet to next year, but it's, it basically allows us to go ahead and release the, the, the contracts to the people who currently are holding those positions, so. That's all I can say on that at the moment.
Is there a motion to approve?
No. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Item 14, consider approval of 20182019 head football coach, Maxwell Ayers.
We met a couple of weeks ago with an interview committee and conducted interviews and happy to say that we're pleased to forward to you the recommendation to hire Max Ayers as our head football coach moving into the 1819 season.
We have Ayers as head football coach.
Second. Good, a motion and a second?
Discussion?
Any other discussion?
One, one comment. It's really good to see that Max has taken the initiative to take on additional roles. This is going to add to his already other staffing roles or coaching. And so we need to make sure that we're helping him out, this being his first head coach. So kind of looking at Justin to make sure that he's getting some extra help and putting that together and maybe seeking out some help from other past coaches that are around here, so.
Very good.
That's it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Correct.
That was a late aye, that's all.
Okay.
Next item is consider approval of 20182019 administrative and administrative support employment contract.
Again, following the, what we did this past year, or this year with our teaching staff and paraprofessional and support staff, using the CPI July number of 2.13, we've proposed that same basic formula to be applied to the administrative and administrative support staff. Just on a note, last year that group took a freeze on salary, so, but, yep, we recommend that to you.
Okay, is there a motion? Seek a motion?
No move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carried. Next up is consider approval of administrative reorganization.
So as this year has progressed, we, over the last several years, we've contracted with CISA 5 for our people services director. For the third year in a row, our people services director will, will be leaving us. And in reality, in the six years I've been here, only my first two years did we have, have we had the same people services director. So we've, you know, we've been through a few. And it is not, you know, it's not that, what it really has been is people have been taking just different positions outside of CISA or retirement or other things going on. It has, we've had a great experience with our, our, our people services director this year. She worked really hard for us this year. We're sorry to see her head, but that's a decision she made. So as this reorganization, what we're essentially proposing to you is that Ms. Christie, who is licensed in people services, take on our, our role as people services director. And that in doing so, we would re-divide the grade levels from the principal standpoint to be a pre-K 6 and then a 712 principal. So I would take on 7 and 8, Kara would give up 7 and 8, but she would take on people services. And then the other piece of this is that we would bring on Mrs. Schroeder as our dean of students. She currently functions essentially in that role for a couple of hours a day. Some days it's four hours a day, other days it's two hours a day, but we would bring her into that role in a, in a full-time manner. And she would be the 512 dean of students.
I would make a motion, seek a motion that we approve the administrative reorganization.
Good, a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. Number 17, authorize 201819 spending at 201718 budget levels beginning July 1, 2018.
Well, the great thing is every year, we don't ever have all the pieces for the budget quite on July 1, when the new budget year rolls on around, although this year we'll be probably closer to having them all because we have a budget from the state at least in place. There's a few things though, you know, we end up having to iron out in terms of figuring out... Uh, there's a few things, though, you know, we end up having to iron out, um, in terms of, uh, figuring out what our open enrollment in and out is for the next year, and, and what those revenues will be, and what the payouts will be and that. Um, so there are some pieces we still have to figure out. So this basically allows us to at least start our budget year with a base level. Um, I would anticipate some increased revenue this next year, um, with our enrollment. Um, we've, we already know we should see, um, we're gonna see increased, um, per pupil aid. Um, and again, we, our, our average will slide, should slide up this next year. That ought to allow, again, some increased revenue. Um, but again, we still have a few of those pieces to just finish putting that puzzle together, so...
Alright, seek a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Number 18, consider approval of release of 2018-19 purchase orders.
So 17 and 18 kinda go together. Uh, if you don't do these, you know, like, we can't issue paychecks and things after July 1st and whatnot. So, these are the things that allow us to do that. This allows us to begin our purchasing for the next year, um, and, and get that moving, so...
Seek a motion?
I move the approval of the release of the 2018-19 purchase orders.
Got a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. Number 19, establish deadline to accept letters of interest in vacant board member position. Establish interview questions and procedures for conducting interviews of candidates for the vacant position.
Um, so, the very first piece is, uh, in our board policy, you need to establish a deadline to receive letters of interest. Uh, Wednesday, July 18th is the board meeting, I would suspect you would want to see the letters of interest prior to that if you could, and we could send those to you as part of a packet or board information that can go to you. Um, you could make it do a week before, you could make it do two weeks before. Um, that's really your pleasure as a board to set that date. Um, we will advertise the vacant position. We have to via, at least put a newspaper publication in, according to our policy. We'll also try to get that, it'll obviously be out on our, on our, our TV broadcast, but we'll get that up on our district, uh, media as well.
So, are you looking to, uh, uh, do those, uh, interviews on the July 18th, uh, meeting?
Yeah, you'll have to, because we're gonna run up against our, uh, deadline to, as a first attempt to fill it if we waited until August.
Yeah, we have 60 days.
Yeah, from the time it becomes vacant, so...
Then I would, uh, make a motion that we make Tuesday the day before the deadline.
Tuesday, like the week before?
No. I, I, we, just 'cause people get down to the wire and all of a sudden, you know, the, the board, I would like to give them a date when it's posted.
Could we do it, um, maybe I would just propose to maybe consider by, maybe by the Friday before, only for the sake of, we could get it into the board packet to you then.
We need to see that the other time.
We could at least get it in the board packet as part of that packet.
Everything that we have prior to that, it just...
Or that Monday, maybe.
Monday.
Like, like, noon, noon on the...
July 16th.
Noon on the 16th?
The meeting is the 18th.
Meeting's the 18th.
So Monday at noon?
So basically, yeah, from...
Then we could, then we could include those with all of your...
I was just thinking Tuesday, because, you know, when the agenda is posted, people are gonna see it and go, oh crap, maybe I wanted to, uh, apply, and, you know, give them that last little bit to, uh...
We can, we can make it work either, it doesn't have to be, yeah, I mean, I can...
The chances are, we won't have anybody else.
Yeah.
But if there is that last one, is it that hard to send that out as a separate item?
We can, whatever your pleasure is, I guess, we can make it work.
I'd, I'd like to, to, you know, see as many people apply as are, are possible. But it's, it's almost like if, if, if it's made known in the next few days, and they run it down to the wire,
I guess I have to question how interested they really are.
All the people that necessarily, you know, look at that, and just give them the opportunity to see it to the latest date. And like I said, most likely, nobody would be on that date anyway, but...
So...
So what, what, what's, what, what date did you propose, Karen?
Tuesday.
At what time?
Seventeenth.
At what time?
Noon.
Could we make it noon?
Yeah.
That, that just gives us time to get it, process it, and get it over to you, at least prior to the meeting.
Mon, yeah, Monday's not alright.
That's fine. It doesn't matter. I, I'm just throwing out my rationale why, um, however...
To do this, you can, you can, because this is all in one thing, you don't have to make, you could, you could make a motion on, on this item alone, and then move to the next part of this, that's, that's fine.
But we do have to do a motion.
Yeah, you have to come to an agreement on it, so...
It's fine.
So, what, what are we doing?
Noon on the 17th.
Well, we need a motion.
I propose a motion that, uh, we, uh, establish the deadline of noon on Tuesday, July 17th for the applications.
Second.
Alright, got a motion and a second? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
For the sake of the, the audience, for the sake of the audience, Kyle, could you review what interested candidates would have to do?
Uh, interested candidates, um, so, they need to basically file with the school district that they are an eligible elector? I believe it's, it's a form that they'll have to come in and file with the school district, and then they'll need to, uh, file a letter of interest as well. Um, they're basically saying, yep, I'm an interested candidate. So, you're, by doing that, you're, you're establishing that deadline for the letters of interest. That also means that they have to, at that, at some point, there as well basically sign that they're eligible to do this, so...
It would, it would behoove them, I would think, to state in their letter of interest, a little bit about who they are and why they would be interested in the position. They don't have to do that, but that would be, that would be appropriate.
That's gonna come out at the first question that we ask.
Yeah, so... Well, if, if, if these people are not individuals that are known to us, then that letter would serve as an induction, so...
Okay, we got the deadline done. Now, we could look at the interview questions and establish those?
Um, so I pulled up a couple of sets of interview questions that, um, come from past. The first set, the original questions, that just basically is a compiled list of, uh, at the time, I'd asked, um, board members to submit what they were interested in asking, and then, um, you, the board, the last time, the board that was sitting at that time, um, whittled that down to four questions. So, that's the second set that you see there.
I think that the revised, reworded combined set is expeditious and pretty complete, in my opinion.
I think the four is good, too, to what we used last time.
I would make a motion that we approve the second set that we used last time, the four questions that are in front of us as the set of questions that we ask.
Second.
Alright, got a motion and a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. Okay, now we can establish the procedure for conducting the interview?
Yep, and so the next piece I have there, um, there's some options for how you do this. Um, I mean, you're gonna conduct an interview, um, really, um, there's two, a couple of ways to do it. One is, um, like a panel format, where you ask one question, and then each candidate answers that one. The other is, you ask each candidate every question. So, um, so...
I would suggest, I think, same question to each candidate, so that you're...
More of that panel format.
Panel format, yeah, I agree.
I would, I would concur. The panel format allows us to compare individual answers, um, as opposed to trying to remember what everybody said.
We're assuming we're having more than one person.
All those procedures we'll do in one motion?
One motion.
After we're done, we have a few more, um, that we need to set who is going first?
Yep, and you can easily do that by just simply, uh, random selection, and we can have that prepared ahead of time, if you'd like. Uh, basically, uh, if we know who all the people are, we'll just have names, and we'll pull a name from a hat.
Sure.
Do you want to alternate the person, we have four questions, alternate the person, you know, that answers first?
Yep.
Yeah.
So rotate it, or alternate.
Yep.
So if there's four candidates, each one of them has to answer the question first once.
Make it fair.
Do you, do you just wanna ask the question?
Yeah, I think that's how it's gonna be. Oh, that next one?
Yeah, the next one, yeah.
John just asked the question.
I'll ask the questions.
That's fine. Um, do you want to establish a time limit?
It's almost kinda contingent upon how many people we have.
I say no time limit.
Well, I, I just caution you on that a little bit. I get where you're going with that, but I just...
Five-minute answer limit would be more than sufficient, would it not?
If you've got, if you've got eight people sitting here, think about that door you're opening by saying it's unlimited.
It's only four questions, too, but, yeah, I...
You gotta, you gotta have a, a, a number, just to keep you from being here until 4 o'clock in the morning.
Does five minutes sound like an appropriate, uh, limit to each question?
Answer, answer, each answer? Or do you have a recommendation? I, I don't have a specific recommendation, I only have a little recollection. I think you had said, I think it might've been three or four minutes last time, but five is probably plenty.
I was gonna say, I think most of them are gonna be two minutes or less, is gonna be the answer.
I would completely agree.
And I just figure five just saves us in case somebody gets a little windy. I mean, that never happened.
Five, five?
Five, yeah.
Okay. And voting procedure?
So, this, by statute, has to be an open vote. This cannot be a closed vote. You can vote via paper ballot, however, you have to put your name down, and we have to read the name. So, we have to read who voted which way. So this, by statute, is an open process.
So the, the paper ballot is just an additional delay, let's just do a voice vote?
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with that. Voice vote.
Voice of one, may I?
I'm fine with it.
And, and really, if, if, you know, it, yeah.
The only, the only, the only difference in having a paper ballot is that me saying yes or no doesn't, you know, make Johns or Leo, you know? And, and maybe we, maybe we should write it down, each of us, beforehand, and then just hold up our answer that way. Then we're not influenced by what anybody else on the board...
If you wanna do paper ballot, we can do that, it's easy.
Yeah, but without having to hand it in. So we can just say, okay, everybody write down their, their candidate, and then just go down the line and say, okay, I vote for Kara.
True.
Yeah, or whoever. You happen to be sitting there, I mean, would that be ironic if there's a Kara that comes to the meeting next time?
Yeah, that's, that's right. So I'll do paper ballot?
But hold it in, you know, so we don't have to have, collect them and read them, we'll just, we'll all write it down.
That's fine, and we can set that up.
That's...
Sure.
And I think the last one is, um, in case there's a deadlock in voting?
Um, in this really, if, if you come to a deadlock, um, this one does not apply. I do not believe we have to apply that one at the moment. Yeah, we do, sorry. Yep, so it's just, how are we gonna do that? And it really can just be a random draw of a name from a box.
Do we have to have that tied three times or something? Don't we have to vote three times?
You have to do, you have to do the three votes, and if the, if the four of us are still tied, then it goes to a random selection.
But that's, this only applies, it really does not apply immediately. This, if you're unable to fill it at the next one, it, it bumps our deadline back.
Right. That's why I'm the nomination.
Yeah. If after three rounds of voting, the board's still unable to fill the vacancy, the chairman of the meeting shall declare a deadlock. But that is only, here's the kicker. If the vacancy is not filled by the duly-elected successor in office pursuant to the previous paragraph that a regular board meeting held no later than 45 days after the end of the initial 60-day period. So this is really, this really, this procedure is pushed out now, the way this is written. Uh, the way the, the, the way the law, the laws did change since you've last done this, um, because of some issues in another school district, filling a vacancy. So there's, there's your initial 60-day period, and you gotta fill it within the 60 if you can. But then if you don't, if you're, if you don't have somebody come out of this next meeting, you bump that back another 45.
So if we come, if we vote 2-2 three straight times...
But that's only down the path, that's only...
I mean, July 18th.
No. If you're a deadlock July 18th, we're pushing it back to a whole nother set of meetings.
Right, that's what I was gonna say. If we do that on July 18th, we will not have a board member that night.
No, you will not. Yep.
I might suggest one other stipulation, if we have, uh, more than two candidates, we may wanna get them down to two for a final vote. You know, if we got three or four candidates...
Well, you, you, this is how this works. You will only nominate who you, it's not a, it's not like voting, you're only gonna make nominations for who you want to be on the board. You're not gonna make, it's not a vote for all of them, it's only for who you wanna be on the board.
Well, if we have four candidates, um, then we, we, one of us might nominate Kara.
Yep.
And then...
And if she gets three, then it's done.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And if, so if you're the first one to nominate somebody that's not gonna get three, then it'll be open to somebody else to nominate the next person.
Okay, yeah, right, that's right. So we, right, we go, we listen to everybody, so let's say we have four, and, uh, Leo nominates Kara, and then we each write down our, that's a yes or no, then. That's right, it's a yes or no, pretty much.
Yeah.
Yes.
So it ain't a straight, who do I want, and you write it down?
So it could be...
You have to vote on the candidate who's the nominee.
Right, right.
Correct.
Okay.
You can, yeah.
And you can, of course, reject that candidate and vote on several of them, then if nobody gets elected, can you come back to the original? Or is it a one, a one-shot wonder?
Get confused.
Once, once, once a candidate has been nominated and voted on, if that candidate is not accepted, then are they done?
No, not necessarily.
And you need to go on to the other candidates? And if none of them are nominated, then you bump the 45 days.
Yep. Yeah, if you can't elect one that night, or you don't nominate one that night, then we're bumping 45 days.
Okay. Alright.
And it's, and it's not necessarily an exact, it says no later than 45 days. So, after that, after that...
You could have a special meeting the next week.
And we're just talking, we're not gonna...
We're just, we're looking at contingencies here, which we...
And it's only, you only, you only put the deadlock procedure into effect after, after you've failed to fill it the first time.
So, yeah, we get done with the questions, any one of us can pipe up and say, I nominate Kara.
Yep.
And then we'll have a vote on her.
Yep.
And if she gets three, it's all done.
It's all done.
If she gets two, we move on to another one?
Then you could, you...
Or somebody else may...
If it's two and two, somebody else could make a motion.
Yeah.
You know, and a deadlock is where motions, it's just obvious the motions aren't gonna continue, they're not gonna pass. Um, and then you could say, well, we're not gonna get this... And then you could say, well, we're not gonna get this filled tonight, we'll go to Ford, we'll push this out again.
I was thinking, yeah, that's right, we're yes, no's, not, not writing down specific...
Once you get to this deadlock procedure, then there's some things, like any candidate who gets at least two people on the board supporting them, is put into like the random selection process, so...
Procedures, so, we'll have somebody that's cut and dry, so, it'll be easy.
Did we cover all the procedures to...
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. So I'd seek a motion to approve those procedures that we just discussed?
So moved.
Second, then.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carrying. So, nothing more to do with that. Number twenty, opportunity of individual board member comment. Kathy?
I would just like to formally thank Paula Bezina for her twenty-one years of service. She was a great asset to our school district for all of those years, and also thanking the staff, both the teaching staff and the support staff, for another great year.
I would obviously ditto everything that Kathy said. At the end of the school year, people are, are both tired and exhilarated, they're looking forward to their time off, they're looking forward to their summer projects and their opportunities to do other things. It's helpful to, you know, to get away and take a break if they can. And my, my compliments to Paula for her excellent service. I would also really encourage residents in the district to consider applying for the open position on the board. It's truly an opportunity to become engaged with your school district in ways that you otherwise would not be able to. It, it's, it's a true opportunity that doesn't come along very often, and I, I would certainly encourage those people who are out there who are watching this, who might have an interest to contact the district office and file a letter of intent. We hope we have a, a good panel of candidates to make a selection from.
Karen? I will reiterate both Kathy and Leo's comments in regards to that, and then just encourage everybody to get outside and enjoy the weather, that's it.
And I'd also like to thank Paula Bezina for, for many years of service to the district, and thank the staff and everyone involved in the school system for a good year, and, graduation went very well, I thought, last week, and thanks for a good year. And I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second, every, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned.